Moving on to the third part of the meeting. This is the session on security. Let's welcome the Secretary for Security and his team, who will be joining us. If you wish to speak, please press the button. I would first invite the Secretary to deliver the opening remarks. Chairman, in the draft estimates for the new financial year, allocation under the Security Bureau's responsibility will be $57.3 billion, down $0.4 billion from the approved estimates last year. The allocation accounts for 75%, 7.5% of the total government expenditure. On safeguarding national security, since the implementation of the national security law order has been restored in the Hong Kong Special Administrative Region. Economic development and people's livelihood are also back on track. We will stay on guard and be vigilant to the attempts of external forces and their agents in the HK SAR, bringing hatred against the central authorities and the HK SAR government through the media, culture, arts, and other forms of soft resistance. Law enforcement agencies will continue to investigate and enforce the law against acts and activities suspected of endangering national security and step up collection and analysis of intelligence, in particular, online information and counter spying intelligence sourced to prevent, suppress, and impose punishment for act and activities endangering national security. On legislation, the HK SAR as government will continue to take forward the local legislation to implement Article 23 of the Basic Law in order to fulfill our constitutional responsibility and start public consultation. And at the table of Changzhou, on crimes, the overall crimes last year's rose by 8.7% from last year. The rise was mainly due to an increase in scams, which had risen for around 40%, accounting for nearly 40% of total crimes. There were also substantial discrete increases in violent and range of major crimes. For wounding and serious assault, snatching, and pickpocketing, they dropped to a record low since Hong Kong's return to the motherland. We will closely monitor crime trends, flexibly deploy resources to intensify efforts to combat crimes, in particular against scams. The police will continue to combat crimes with comprehensive measures, including intelligence-led operations, collaboration with relevant stakeholders to prevent scams, and intercept payments. We will also raise public awareness through targeted publicity and education. On counterterrorism, we will strengthen intelligence gathering and enhance departments' preparedness. The interdepartmental counterterrorism unit, ICTU, will continue to promote counterterrorism education among the public, encouraging them to provide information on terrorism and violence. On nonreformant claims, the HK SAR government has adopted a multi-pronged strategy to tackle this issue with the gradual assumption of international flight connections and the implementation of the updated removal policy last year. In the first three months this year, for each, for every month, 120 unsubstantiated claimants per month are removed. That's a rise of over 30% from last year. The Immigration Department will continue to make every effort to expedite the removal of unsubstantiated claimants. On normal travel between Hong Kong to mainland, which has resumed since February 6th, the land border control points are now operating smoothly. We will remain closely in touch with mainland authorities to ensure that BCPs operate smoothly and provide convenient and efficient immigration clearance services. On the flow of talent, the Hong Kong SL government has all along adopted an open immigration policy that attracts talent and facilitates business, while maintaining effective immigration control. Last June, the government launched a pilot scheme which enables visitors invited by authorized host organizations to take part in specified short-term activities in Hong Kong without the need to apply for employment visa. For this year, starting from February, the mainland authorities have introduced the exit endorsement for talents traveling to and from Hong Kong and Macau in the Greater Bay Area on a pilot basis. Those holders of the endorsement, and if they meet the requirements of this program, they can take part in short-term activities in Hong Kong for remuneration. These measures facilitate the flow of talent and achieve a win-win outcome. For old buildings, on the amendment of the Fire Safety Buildings Ordinance, the public consultation was done last September. Views received support to empowering the fire services department and the buildings department to carry out fire safety improvement works for owners who fail to comply with the requirements and recover the fees from them after the works. We propose a default works mechanism and will submit the amendment proposal as a bill to the Legislative Council for scrutiny. On the custodial work and rehabilitation of persons in custody, the Correctional Services Department, or CSD, will continue to proactively adopt technologies and raise efficiency and security level for prison management. The CSD will enhance rehabilitation programs to help the persons in custody rebuild positive values. For youth development, the Security Bureau is committed to having more active members of youth uniformed groups for the Discipline Services Department. Last year, the six discipline services saw a growth in their active membership by over a quarter to more than 5,700 members. On fighting drugs, cannibidial, or CBD, has been listed as a dangerous drug since February this year. The drug is now under control. The government has stepped up promotion and education targeting local residents and visitors to prevent inadvertent breaches of the law. Law enforcement will continue to closely watch the global trends and combat drug offenses. Chairman, the representatives from the departments and I are pleased to take questions from members. Thank you, Chairman. We will start with the questions and answers session. Each member gets five minutes. First, Dr. Chau Man Khoang. Chair, I thank the six discipline services for safeguarding Hong Kong. Two questions, zero number 009 and 048. I noticed something interesting when I read the two replies in conjunction. For 2023 to 24, there will be $1.4 billion going into dealing with nonreformant claimants. And we get more than 3.3 million fixed penalty notices issued each year. So that means for all the fixed penalty notices, or FPNs, noticed issued, that money is not enough to cover the amount on nonreformant claims. More than 50 nonreformant claims are removed. So this will take the work of not just the departments, but also something through diplomatic channels to address the problem at root. There will be huge expenses. Last year, $1.1 billion was spent, and then this year, there will be $1.4 billion on nonreformant claimants. That's a heavy burden on our public coffers. So on the diplomatic front, for claimants from Vietnam, Indonesia, can we remove more those claimants rather see money going to other areas where needed, instead of having the money go to those areas? On fixed penalty notices, or FPNs, there's a new target. More tickets will be given out. There's a portable printer. It's very handy. It accounts for 91% of all the tickets handed out. We want to encourage people to obey the law. We also have to find a way to reduce the number of tickets we hand out. For commercial drivers, if you hand them a couple of tickets, all the earnings on that day would go into the penalties. We want to address obstructs, obstructions, but we also need to exercise some sort of leniency for commercial drivers. We appreciate there are concerns about nonreformant claims. But then there is the Hong Kong Bill of Rights Ordinance, the Basic Law, and also some judgments handed down by the Court of Final Appeal. The cases lay down the principles that the government has some duty to follow the law by giving fair treatment in processing the claims from those nonreformant claims. In the year to come, we will be spending more money on nonreformant claims. From $1 billion to $1.4 billion. There's a reason. We expect more nonreformant claimants. We've had COVID. So there was a drop in the number of nonreformant claims. We've done a lot of work for the Immigration Department. The Immigration Department processes the claims. There were some claimants who said they did not speak English, or they said they were unwell and tried to stall. But now, if we believe they actually can speak English and they're not ill, then we proceed with the procedure. There's also an update in the procedure. Once the Court of First Appeal, the Court of First Instance rejects the application for appeal, for leave, even if there's pending legal procedure, the Immigration Department can proceed with the removal procedure. On expediting the removal of claimants, COVID has eased off. So now we're removing more claimants by an extra 30%. The Commissioner of Police will tell us more about the fixed penalty ticket. For illegal parking, the police attach importance to the problem for serious traffic obstruction and also vehicles endangering road safety, which have been taking resolute law enforcement actions. On issuing tickets, we target obstruction and behavior that endangers road safety. We're not handing out tickets just for its own sake. For law enforcement, we want to minimize the casualties from traffic accidents, serious injuries, for example. There are many police districts. Every day, our officers get calls. Thirty to 60% of the calls have to do with traffic matters. Officers get different kinds of complaints about traffic. There's law enforcement. We also step up publicity and education so that we don't have to come to the point of law enforcement. Next, Dr. Lo Wei Quo. Thank you, Chairman. Reply zero number SB142. My question has to do with the amendment to the Fire Services Ordinance enacted in 2017. That amendment has to do with empowering the Fire Services Department to introduce the Registered Fire Engineer. This is about getting a qualified third party to take part in the work. First, assessing fire safety risks. And also, second, the ventilation facilities. Back then, the Secretary for Security was Mr. Leitong Quo. He explained the amendment. The Fire Services Amendment Bill 2016 was enacted in 2017. But there has to be subsidiary legislation. The reply is technically right. On the details, on the code of practice, consultation is needed with the stakeholders. The groundwork was done beforehand. The government considered it feasible and then proceeded with the amendment. But then it's years since 2017. We don't see the proposal yet. The progress is staggeringly low. Why this delay? There was a hurry to bring in the system of registered fire engineers. That was partly to relieve the heavy workload of the Fire Services Department. I know the FSD is working hard. The FSD has its plate full. There's a backlog. The workload may also affect other fire safety duties. So my second question has to do with the manpower at the FSD. What's the workload and manpower like at the FSD?
Thank you. I will invite the Director of Fire Services to take the two questions. Yes, Mr. Yang. About the Registered Fire Engineer, I'd like to give you more details. Upon conclusion of the consultation exercise conducted earlier, we received feedback from stakeholders and we proceeded to drafting the regulation. As Dr. Lo Wei Quo knows, after passage of the bill, we should proceed to making regulations. And we are close to completing the draft of, say, the Registered Fire Engineer Regulation and another piece of regulation. Well, the bill provides that in vetting applications, the applicants should pay a fee. But then the fee should be waived since a member of the public should have paid the Registered Fire Engineer in the application. And that is why we also prescribed fees, or the waiver of fees in the regulation. The third area relates to rules applicable to the regulation of Registered Fire Engineers. Apart from the three regulations I mentioned, we also need to draw up a code of practice for compliance by Registered Fire Engineers. So we are working on the code of practice at the same time. So I just mentioned the three regulations and one code of practice. We are sparing no effort in taking all these forward with a view to completing them by the end of this year. Still, it takes some time to finish the work. For example, we need to amend the relevant pieces of legislation so that the fees originally paid by the public to the government will now be paid to Registered Fire Engineers. We're able to complete the relevant inspection of buildings in relation to fire safety. We have sufficient resources. Right, in 2014, when, in 2016, when the principal legislation was passed, we had the understanding that everything was in place. The stars were aligned, except for the third reading of the bill. That is why, as I said, after passage of the bill, upon three readings in 2017, we have the framework ready, but we are not making any progress at all. I just want to make sure that we will go ahead with the implementation so that we can achieve win-win for the public as well as for the sector. Mr. Kenneth Lam, Mr. Lee Chun Kung, Ms. Carmen Ken, Ms. Zhou Vie Chan, Mr. Tony Chan, Dr. Priscilla Lam, Mr. Andrew Lam, Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Edmund Wong. Then my turn, followed by Mr. Leitong Quo. This will be the sequence of members. I have a question on reply zero number 128, 129, relating to young persons in custody furthering their studies and developing their careers upon release. Now, in the reply in zero number 128, I understand that the CSD has set up the Prisoners Education Trust Fund and number of education subsidy schemes to provide financial assistance for persons in custody who want to pursue further studies but have difficulties in paying for public examinations, so on and so forth. And the average amount of subsidy granted in the past five years was about $2.7 million. Now, please explain in greater detail the use of the subsidies. Is it for paying public examinations or for paying for the courses? And can you tell me roughly how many students have been granted this subsidy? Also, from the reply, I understand that a rehabilitation college will be established to offer full-time continuing education programs for adult persons in custody to enroll on a voluntary basis. I want to know what additional value can be brought by the Rehabilitation College on top of the existing vocational and continuing education services for the PICs? The other question is in reply zero number 129. And that is the Project Path. I understand it has been, it has received a very good feedback because the, those convicted because of the black hat violence could take part in this project as well. Now, my question is, after taking part in Project Path, is there any record for the participants? Is there a certificate for the rehabilitants to be reintegrated into society? Secretary, I'll defer to the Director of Correctional Services to take the three questions. Yes, Mr. Wong? Now, on education for persons in custody offered by the CSD, we take a multi-pronged approach. According to the law, we offer half-day vocational course and half-day compulsory education for young PICs. As for adult PICs, according to the law, they are required to work for six to 10 hours a day. But the CSD strongly encourages adult PICs to pursue education after work hours. Upon release from the correctional institutions, education attainment can help them find jobs. Now, for adult PICs, as mentioned, the courses are offered on a voluntary basis. On providing incentives for them to pursue studies, our plan is to establish a Rehabilitation College. In a designated institution, we're going to arrange for adult PICs to take up full-time continuing education courses. The courses will be modified on a basis of those offered under EJIN program. The, it will be a one-year certificate course. Since it's a full-time course, the students will not be required to work. So we're giving them a choice to further their studies in this full-time mode as an incentive. Now, the member also asked about the number of persons in custody receiving subsidies under the fund. The average amount of subsidy granted was about $2.7 million. From 2018 to 2022, on average, about 1,164 participants received the grants. Can you give me details of the grants? Is it for school fees, textbook, public examination fees, as well as course fees? All right, last question. Is there a certificate upon completion of Project Path? No, basically, no certificate. Next, Ms. Carmen Ken. I'm sorry, Mr. Lee Chun Kung. Thank you, Chair. Now, I think it's common knowledge that we have an improved image of the Discipline Services with the support of the Bureau and the efforts of the Secretary. The Discipline Services are now seen in a positive light, and this is good for the next generation. They should be taught in school so that they understand that our Discipline Services are here to protect us. Now, I have a question on SB059, similar to the question put by Dr. Chau Man Khoang about deception cases. The crime rate this year rose as a result of an increase of scams. Now, in SB048, Dr. Chau Man Khoang also referred to the same point. That is, you have done a lot to prevent members of the public from being scammed. So I understand you have the Scam Meter Plus and the Scam Meter Plus app, but I didn't know about these apps and software until today. Is there any publicity efforts you can make so that you can publicize your good deeds to the public to prevent the young and the old and the general public from being scammed? With reopening of the boundaries, I believe that the number of scams will only surge. So my question is on the government's handling of scams. Especially, there might be, you know, criminals trying to apply drugs in order to practice scamming. Now, I defer to the Police Commissioner to take your questions. On deception cases in 2022, 27,903 deception cases were recorded. The majority of them were shopping scams, online shopping frauds, namely. And there are also investment scams, online dating scams, telephone scams. About some 2,800 cases recorded. Indeed, we have mounted major publicity programs such as Scam Meter app. We also publicize the messages in shopping malls. For example, we have the latest app, Scam Meter Plus, and we invited the celebrity, Mr. Aaron Quo, to produce an API for us on TV. We have extensive publicity on TVs, radio stations, social media platforms. But we found that the victims of these cases have not even watched any of these APIs because they are complacent that they will not be scammed. So Mr. Lee mentioned telephone scams. Now, last year, in 2022, we recorded 2,831, up by close to 1.5 times from 1,140 cases in the previous year. Usually, telephone deception comprises pretending to be officials or guess who cases. For guess who cases, we recorded some 1,500 cases. For pretending to be officials, 1,290 cases. As I mentioned just now, we have mounted publicity on various media platforms, and we have noticed the following. When victims are unaware of the motives or perennae of the scammers, when they receive these scamming calls, they won't be able to differentiate them. And that is why we often tell everybody that if you know about the MO of these scams, you should tell people around you about the MOs. Because over 80% of the telephone scams involved victims aged 65 or above. So many people turn a blind eye to the publicity messages and materials. So as mentioned in the panel meetings before, we do our best to make sure that this is publicized. For example, we publish, we play this message in the 17 tunnels, and we also played an API in all cinemas before the films are shown. Now, I mentioned the Scam Meter app, and I also encourage people to call the ADCC hotline, Anti-Deception Hotline 1-8222. And in 2022, the number of calls went up by 8,000 as compared to the previous years. So there is a greater awareness of this hotline now. There are many telephone scams involving mainland students. At the end of last year, we enlisted the help of over 1,000, I mean, we invited some 1,000 mainland students to attend the talk, and then they became a platform. They acted as ambassadors in further disseminating this message. And since then, fewer mainland students have fallen into the scam traps. Now, last September, we set up a working group with the OJO and the Communications Authority. The work of the working group will continue, and that is the OFCA. The work of the working group will continue, and that is the O F C A. We the work with the O F C A. In the first three months of this year, the number of telephone scams comparing to the uh fourth quarter of last year uh has been dropped substantially. For example, for guess who cases, the number of cases dropped by forty-three percent. For pretending to be officials, the number of cases dropped by fifty-seven percent. We hope to sustain our effort, but then we can't act alone. Relevant stakeholders should also chip in, such as the uh OFCA and mobile telecommunications operators. As for our next step, would also like to enlist the help of banks as well. They are in the best position to help us eradicate the scams.
A follow-up question, just one point. We've seen scam victims from all age groups. Will you ask OFCA to install those apps on all mobile phones on sale? Would you make that mandatory? That's something we may consider. Commissioner, I've heard those broadcasts you mentioned at least six times every day. Many people ride M T R trains. When people switch on the radio, do they get your message too? This is exactly something we're talking to the M T R Corporation about. We want to have such broadcasts for riders of M T R trains. We're talking to the M T R C about this. We're also talking to the K M B Corporation about this. When you put M T R and K M B buses together, that's eighty percent of the commuters. People have been telling me that when they go through a tunnel, they hear the broadcast. Ms. Carmen Cam, please. S B O one one and also O one three and also O O three. These questions have to do with critical infrastructure and also emergency response in terms of the manpower and resources for the response in on O one one, critical infrastructure. I asked about the work. It's not just about the legislation. The government told us they're looking at overseas standards and practices on safeguarding critical infrastructure. I asked whether the government would look at the legislation of our own country. I know it takes time to enact legislation. Now, there was a checkerboard three exercise about the nuclear plant, the exercise. So we will be doing something similar. Another question raised by Mr. Laitong Quoc on monitoring. Last year, the power cable bridge caught fire in Yunlong. So for power supply systems, telecommunications network. Mr. Gary Chen's question has to do with cross-boundary travel. Can we have exercises on cross-boundary trains? So the question is, has the government talked to the Guangdong authorities about this? In the response to Mr. Gary Chen, the government said there is a mechanism to work with the Guangdong authorities. Would there be exercises along with the Guangdong authorities? Next question, question S B reply zero number S B O one O, question from Dr. Junius Ho, publicity and education. He quoted provisions of the law. The government said there's no separate breakdown of the expenditure. So some work and some money comes from the Security Bureau, some money comes from the Education Bureau. The Security Bureau plays a key role in security matters. The response goes like this. The government issues booklets and takes other measures to achieve this goal. So there is no specific budget on the work. Would there be a central budget under the Office of the Committee the Office for Safeguarding National Security or National Security Work? First question on critical infrastructure. This covers the utilities and telecommunications systems. For people's daily lives and national security, such infrastructure is important. So we will consider legislation on the critical infrastructure. We've looked at the mainland laws, there are at least three mainland laws. Macau also has similar legislation. The same goes for Singapore, Australia, and the U S. We're looking at the legislation elsewhere. We're consulting various trades to find out their concerns. That's how we can take our next step in the future on our research and our future consultations. On the responsibilities for the critical infrastructure. Now turning to the emergencies. Say, a response to a nuclear incident, or there may be natural disasters or traffic accidents. There are contingency plans. The Security Bureau has such contingency plans. When a major accident happens, other bureaus also have contingency plans. There is also collaboration with the mainland for the nuclear response. We held an exercise in collaboration with the mainland authorities and bodies. Response to disasters involves not just Hong Kong, but our neighbors. Now turning to national security education, this will take the work of not just one bureau. We all have a part to play in safeguarding national security. The S B has a role. We do our youth work. We also do virtue exhibitions that falls under the perthew of the Security Bureau. Now, for the Education Bureau, they also promote national security through activities. For the Home and Youth Affairs Bureau, their routine community work also touches on national security. When each bureau has its own budget for national security promotion, each bureau gets flexibility. There's the routine work. Under Article nineteen of a national security law, it says that further details cannot be disclosed when it comes to national security. Next, Ms. Zhou Fei Chen. Just then, Mr. Michael Lee mentioned scam meter. The Kuai Ching Police District asked me to promote the scam meter on my social media platforms. Next time when I make a video, I will share this with Mr. Michael Lee. Now, I've been following up on the question of non-reformant claims. S B O one eight ten O two seven. The replies said in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, the publicly funded legal assistance will see expenditure rise by fifty-four percent from last year. That's a sizable rise. This is because the Immigration Department estimates them. There will be more non-reformant claims in twenty twenty-three from twenty twenty-two. The government has rolled out measures to deal with non-reformant claims and also speed up the processing of claims from bogus claimants. There will also be more detention centers. I commend the work done by the Security Bureau. There is also the advanced passenger information system to prevent potential bogus claimants from coming to Hong Kong. With all these measures, we're supposed to see fewer non-reformant claimants. So how come we're forecasting a rise in such claimants instead of a drop? There will be more claimants, but we don't see any increase in manpower. For twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, the Immigration Department will have two hundred and seven officers dealing with the applications. That's the same size as in twenty eighteen to nineteen. So manpower-wise, can the Immigration Department cope with all those non-reformant claims? Thank you. First, on the non-reformant claims. In twenty twenty-two, that year saw a drop from a twenty twenty-one level, a drop by roughly a third. For the first three months this year, the number is also on the low side. We believe this has to do with COVID. So we expect that over time, there will be more such claims. Ms. Chen mentioned a raft of measures that we have rolled out. Those measures are about speeding up the applications, the claims we have already received. We have to address the source of the problem. We have updated some measures and also strengthened detention measures so that existing claimants can be removed quickly. We expect more non-reformant claimants, but we will speed up the processing. And then according to the law, we have to provide the legal support. So that explains the estimate. Now, there's a there's no increase in the Immigration Department's establishment. Of course, it would be nice to have more manpower, but then we have to strike a balance given our resources. We're being more efficient now with changes to the law, to our procedures, to our administrative measures. We're taking steps to curb abuse of our procedure by non-reformant claims. We're also strengthening measures at detention centers. COVID has eased off, so we are speeding up the removal process too. So we can have fewer non-reformant claimants here without having to increase our manpower. Next, Mr. Tony Te. I want to follow up on two replies. S B O one six. The discipline services provide critical services. We need to retain good officers. In twenty twenty-one, there was a review of the grade of the discipline services. Some recommendations came out on improvement measures. I'm a member of the Standing Committee on the Structural Review of our Discipline Services Grade. I believe most of those recommendations should be implemented. There is this point about the government flying service on wastage. Officer grade wastage rate at nine point seven percent. Are the recommended improvements fully implemented? For air crew workers, we propose to retitle them as air crew officers. Why is that not implemented yet? Can the Civil Service Bureau speed up the implementation of this measure? It's a simple task. Why isn't this done yet? S B one two one, that's what my next question has to do with. This has to do with the Correctional Services Department. This is about rehabilitation of young offenders. We're seeing offenders of South Asian descent. Some of them are bogus refugees. But I believe some are permanent residents of Hong Kong. Has the C S D taken measures targeting this group? They could be a source of labor force. Are there measures to facilitate their rehabilitation so that they can rejoin the community and serve as part of our labor force?
Secretary. Thank you. In relation to recruitment of the government flying service uh and also young rehabilitants, I will defer to my colleagues. I just want to give you an overview of the six discipline services. For the Hong Kong Police Force, the vacancy rate now stands at eighteen percent. C S D, ten percent. G F S, sixteen percent. For G F S, it has a small establishment, so the base figure is smaller. As for the other discipline services, uh it's a single-digit percentage in terms of um wastage rate, which is acceptable. Now, first of all, I thank the uh this the Standing Commission of Discipline Services for um suitably recommending pay adjustment. Will a pay hike help attract more recruits? Of course, uh that is true, but we also need to strike a balance. Uh we need to, for example, have regard to the work environment. Whilst officers are on duty, it's it's difficult for them to uh communicate with their families, for example. And we're trying to come up with ways to address these issues. The police uh has also mounted different recruitment exercises in universities, uh even in the mainland with a view to inviting more candidates to apply. As for the uh G F S, I will now defer to the controller to take the question. And then uh I will invite the Director of Correctional Services to take the other question. Controller Captain West Wu. The G F S comprises only of officer grade. We have um the we have pilots, aircraft engineers and aircraft technicians, which is the subject of this question. Uh it we have a high wastage rate because of retirement. That accounts of the major reason. Since twenty nineteen, in fact, we have just seen a surge in the number of officers retiring. And I understand that members are concerned about how we replenish the um service to ensure we have sufficient manpower. In terms of recruitment, we have made uh the best effort. We strive to streamline the procedures, for example. And with limited time and resources, we strive to expedite the recruitment process. The major difficulty facing us is training. We need to train um the uh the pilots and the air traffic officers so that they can take up frontline work. Uh in terms of pilots, we have a simulate, we have a flight simulation center. We have a new flight simulator. In the coming few years, this new simulator should help expedite the training of our offices, especially for helicopters, so as to make up for the uh vacancies. As for other grades, we also do our level best to recruit from the private sector. In fact, uh we have candidates from the private sector coming from, say, the field of aircraft engineering and technical staff. Uh yes, Mr. Wong? We have all along attached importance to training rehabilitants and persons in and persons in custody so that upon release, they are equipped with the skills to be reintegrated into society. For young persons in custody, the vocational training covers thirteen different courses. For adult PICs, we provide one thousand four hundred places for adult PICs to undertake on a voluntary basis, covering some forty plus subjects. And these are accredited courses. Which means that upon completion of the courses, they can rely on the education attainment to seek employment and to further their studies. We do not impose any restriction in terms of ethnicity um and other qualities. Now, may I ask for a written reply uh about the DSCC's recommendation? Or the Standing Committee on Discipline Services, salaries and conditions of service. Doctor Priscilla Lo. My question is on oh one nine. And this is a question for the secretary and his team. Last Sunday, um there was a Thai festival and on a website, the the clip was viewed by some two thousand um viewers and water was sprayed at the television pro, uh television production team and a police officer. Now, the message on is that despite uh Hong Kong's entering a new phase of prosperity from stability, there are still a handful of um anti-government forces lurking lurking around. And they are pouncing on every opportunity to do their deed. So that's the clip about the Songkrom Festival. And you need to educate the public about the need to legislate on Article twenty three of the Basic Law. From the reply, I know you have done a lot of work uh on publicity and education. But these are all conventional ways. I think, of course, the government will only legislate on Article twenty three of the Basic Law uh when the time is ripe and you'd also need to build a positive atmosphere in the community. But your goal should be to educate the public about the merits of Article twenty three legislation. It is not something that we should be fear of. We should also cherish the trust of the central authorities on us and we should do it right. Well, we need to have regard to the current situation, including technology advancements uh in drawing up the legislation. This is the hardware. We should also make sure that people welcome um the legislation on Article twenty three. Otherwise, otherwise, uh we will be uh we will have to deal with radicals. And even one radical is too many. You need to disseminate and hammer home this message in the community. The second point is that I think the Security Bureau should publicize more um extensively the your work. It's not just about uh provision, correctional services and also cap five seven two and making arrests. The Security Bureau covers a very wide portfolio. So you need to publicize your work uh as so that you can harness support from the public when you legislate on Article twenty three. It all points towards support for legislation on Article twenty three. Secretary. Now, the member mentioned a particular case, and I don't think it's an appropriate occasion to speak on this case here. Safe to say that we'll definitely investigate into any case involving uh any access and danger national security. Indeed, uh soft resistance is a means of um of um going against the government in terms of leveraging on the media, culture and arts. These elements seek to incite hatred against the country and against the government. And I earlier already uh mentioned that the some media outlets have this ulterior motive. Now, about legislating on Article twenty three of the Basic Law, this is the constitutional responsibility of the Hong Kong S E L government. Still, we need to have regard to what happened in twenty nineteen, recent court cases and uh some incidents involving Hong Kong in the international arena. We need to have regard to the risks facing us and the possible risks emerging from the exercise. We need to be forward looking and take preemptive action. Instead of making arrests only after somebody has broken the law, we need to make sure that there is sufficient deterrents. We need to plug all loopholes and prevent a crime from happening. In terms of legislating on Article twenty three and national security law, publicity and public education are of utmost importance. Apart from the Security Bureau, the Education Bureau and the Home and Youth Affairs Bureau join hands in mounting publicity uh programs such as youth programs, mainland visits and collaboration with the Education Bureau in including national security education in the curriculum. And we also uh should uh use different ways to tell good stories uh of Hong Kong. So apart from stating hard facts on social media platforms, we also take a people oriented approach to let the general public know more about the work of discipline services and how we serve the talents and how we, for example, process license applications. Next, Doctor Johnny Ng.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Security Bureau and the uh various departments for providing quality services. I have a question on SB one oh nine. According to the uh official figures, there has been a surge in the number of false marriages. As of February twenty twenty three, the number of cases investigated by the Immigration Department uh was four hundred and twenty and five hundred and six persons were arrested and fifty nine were convicted. So that's an eighty eight percent increase comparing to the two hundred and twenty three cases investigated in the previous year. Have you considered the reason for the substantial increase? Can you tell us about the MO of these cases? And what's the purpose of um those involving in bogus marriage cases? What is the purpose of their coming to Hong Kong? And there's also a trend of younger uh culprits uh involving in uh getting involved in bogus marriages. On instant messaging apps, some unscrupulous elements uh enlisted young people to take part in bogus marriages with a view to uh getting quick cash. Will you step up your effort in targeting and tackling these crimes? Director of Immigration, Mr. Au.
Uh thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the questions. We investigated more cases because earlier we were affected by, I mean, our work was affected by covid nineteen. As the epidemic subsided and with resumption of cross boundary travel in twenty twenty two, twenty three, the number of bogus marriage cases investigated increased substantially. But in previous years, say in twenty twenty eighteen, nineteen or nineteen twenty, on average, some thirty eight cases were investigated per month. And uh between twenty seventeen, eighteen, all the way to twenty nineteen, twenty, the average number was forty nine per month. Now, we are, this figure is on the low side, but with um more activities uh happening and uh our return to normalcy with a resumption of normal travel arrangements and more registration of marriages, et cetera. Uh we envisage more cases to be investigated. Now, some criminals in the past posted advertisements in the newspapers to enlist Hong Kong citizens to engage in bogus marriage cases. They have now turned to social media platforms. Uh the Immigration Department collects uh evidence through various channels such as newspaper advertisements, websites, uh social media platforms. They usually use uh wordings like um cross boundary marriages between Hong Kong and the mainland, and we tackle these intermediaries. In twenty twenty, we uh set up a unit for tackling online crimes and gathering uh intelligence online so as to enhance our capacity in tackling crimes in which criminals incite Hong Kong citizens to engage in bogus marriages through social media platforms and online channels. Now, this unit um has the equipment to conduct a forensic analysis of the uh evidence collected online. We take an all out approach in combating bogus marriage cases. Apart from online patrol at uh at border checkpoints, say we also target suspected passenger, um I mean um uh visitors. And and in also, for registration of births, deaths and marriages um and ID documents, we also refer suspicious cases for further investigation. We also disseminate messages through press releases and media briefings about uh our effort in cracking down bogus marriage intermediaries. At the same time, we also remind members of the public in Hong Kong of the dire consequences should they take part in bogus marriages. We also have a on, have an online publicity channel. Uh we have an API for this purpose, which um is uploaded to uh online video platforms uh for sharing. Uh once again, it's a reminder, anyone who obtains a uh um a permit to stay in Hong Kong um through bogus marriages uh will be deemed invalid and they will be committing criminal offense and they will be punished. We will continue to combat these cases.
Mister Edmund Wong, SB one four eight. That's my own question. This has to do with the ambulance system of the Fire Services Department. I asked the FSD last year whether they would do a review of the emergency ambulance service. The FSD said there was no such need. There's a reason I put this question to the FSD. Now, we have one million seniors in the community, and then ten years from now, there will be two point three, two point four million people. I'm aging myself. You shouldn't start hiring people only when you realize there are more seniors around. Without a review of the emergency ambulance service, would there, what would be the recruitment like? After all, we can foresee more emergency calls. Would there be specific kinds of medical priority dispatch systems? We maybe, we will be getting more cardiac arrest cases. Can we have specific ambulances equipped with certain kinds of equipment and technologies to ensure a higher survival rate for those suffering from cardiac arrest? Now, we don't have those ambulance motorbikes now. In nighttime, we appreciate there are safety concerns. The officers operating those motor vehicles are highly skilled officers. Those suffering from cardiac arrest need urgent care. So can we have more resources? Can we have more such ambulance motorcycles? We're in a volatile environment. There are many accidents. Some time ago, the Fire Services Department sent a rescue team to Turkey. Would there be more resources to develop more specialist teams to meet the needs of these volatile times? The Director of Fire Services will address the deep questions in detail on question, on resources. If there's a need, we will apply for such resources. First, the question about the medical priority dispatch system. The member mentioned this point last year. There were more emergency calls. So we asked the head of the ambulance service to explore whether we can have the such a system. We need data. We need to see which of those cases emergency calls warrant or are suitable for a priority dispatch system. There's merit about the study. We take a call. We do a simple prioritization step. And then with the data, we can try it out. We can see how a priority dispatch system works out. We're trying to get the data to look into this. Second, on the manpower, on ambulancemen. We fill vacancies every year. We do recruitment. For ambulance men, we will recruit a hundred twenty six ambulancemen. On the ambulance motorbikes, we have thirty five motorbikes at various ambulance depots. At nighttime, there are safety risks. But we're gradually extending the operating hours of these ambulance motorbikes. So that even during nightfall, some bikes will be in use. On vehicles to provide support, we have the rapid response vehicles. A single officer operates such rapid response vehicles. If a call cannot be attended to within twelve minutes, then the ambulance officer operates the rapid response vehicles. On training specialist teams. There's a dedicated team for rescue support teams. Right now, it covers seventeen ambulance depots. It will be extended to fourteen depots, roughly a hundred and forty. There is also a mountain rescue team and also an epidemic control team. As you mentioned, in the case of the Turkey, the urban search and rescue team. We're also developing all kinds of rescue teams. The director said there are rescue vehicles with ambulance officers rushing to scenes where an ambulance cannot arrive in twelve minutes. For rapid response vehicles, we have maybe three or four in the city, four in the city. There were thirty five motorbikes for daytime service, forty ambulance depots. So that means not every fire service station has one motorbike. And you're relying on just four rapid response vehicles come nightfall. Can we have at least one ambulance motorbike or at least one ambulance for each station or each district? We're gradually ramping up the motorbike services where resources allow. We promoted two electric motorbikes earlier to meet different need. We try to ramp up the number of motorbikes we have. In some places, there's traffic jam. Motorbikes are better suited because they can arrive at the scene more quickly. For motorbikes, you need just one officer, and they can attend to those in urgent need. We're out of time, so please follow up on the issue on a different occasion. There should be less traffic jam at night. Why not use the bikes more often? On Friday nights, you do see a traffic jam. Fridays, Saturdays. We may fail to reach the scene in the time we promised, Mr. Leitong Kwok. SB oh-one-eight. There's a table in the response from the Security Bureau. Sharp rise in expenditure in humanitarian assistance. An estimated increase of a third publicly funded legal assistance, a rise of nearly fifty to sixty percent. But for claimants still in Hong Kong, we don't see as sharp a rise in their number. The Secretary for Security was saying they expected more claimants this year. I compare that to the previous year's figures. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, we have some figures here. The number of claimants this year is comparable to what we had from twenty eighteen to twenty. So why such a sharp rise in the number of non-reform on claimants this year? The Security Bureau has already taken measures, a series of measures, including applying for a restrictive proceedings order from the court. And when the first apply for the leave for judicial re-review is rejected, the SB no longer waits for the conclusion of the legal proceedings and goes ahead with the removal. All these measures are supposed to reduce the number of claimants to Hong Kong. Why such a pessimistic forecast on the part of the Security Bureau? That's the analysis from the relevant departments. Now that COVID is easing off, we expect a rise in the number of non-reform on claimants on the money for humanitarian assistance and publicly funded legal assistance. They are directly linked to the number of claimants here. We have a forecast. It may turn out that there will, there are fewer claimants here, but that money will not go to waste. Follow-up questions? No follow-up. Next, Ms. Lillian Kwak. Thank you. SB oh-one-nine, SB one-two-seven, and SB one-force-eight. SB oh-one-nine. On promoting the national security law, that's important work. The same goes for education. We need to get the education and the publicity right with the national security law. The reply says there's no dedicated estimate or manpower for promoting or education on national security law. So where will the work be going? We don't have the directions. It makes no sense to have no estimate dedicated for that work. Can I get a more detailed response from the Secretary on this? SB one-two-seven. That's my question. There's the Psychological Services Section, seventeen clinical psychologists, thirty-one other staff members. Two hundred and forty-three people were arrested under the national security law. We believe there are other offenders, others going through rehabilitation. These people need counseling and follow-up. You have so few staff members in the section. Can they cope with the follow-up work needed for those rehabilitated? Every such case is a serious case. You need personalized follow-up and in-depth counseling. So I'm skeptical, given the small establishment, will the government put more resources into the work to reduce the risk of recidivism? Can I get a response from the government on this? SB one-four-eight. On first aid for emergency ambulance services. The government is moving some services to other districts. There are massive public housing developments, maybe a hundred thousand people in the intake for certain areas of the city. Some frontline officers are saying that some districts are seeing massive intake, and that translates into a huge increase in workload. Elsewhere in old districts, there are frequent emergency calls. On emergency ambulance services, will the department be reconsidering how it's put, where it puts the ambulance depots?
Secretary, I will defer to the Director of Correctional Services and Director of Fire Services to take the other questions, but I'd like to first answer the question on estimates for national security education. We don't set aside a separate item, but it falls under the estimate for the Security Bureau. So we don't have an itemized uh uh estimate for national security. We have different areas of work involving education on national security, such as educating youths, collaboration with schools. For example, we have um quizzes in schools. Uh we also have, for example, another event uh on the fifteenth of April, we will have the National Security Education Day. We have a flag-raising ceremony. We have seminars and talks and an open day. And that is why we don't have a separate item for the expenditure of a particular event. So it doesn't mean that we don't set aside an estimate for national security education. I will now defer to my colleagues to answer the rest of the questions about CP services. We understand that psychological services are of uh importance to persons in custody. Through counseling, we can help uh change their mindset so that they have positive thinking. For example, in terms of young PICs, we have the project path and also um a number of initiatives to help them, to help PICs in correctional institutions. Depending on the need in the future, we will apply for resources to enhance psychological services for the PICs. On EAS. Last year, we engaged consultant to uh look at the demand for ambulance depots in the coming ten years, and we also make use of our geographical information system to check spots where an ambulance cannot reach within ten minutes. We also analyze demographic changes. For example, um in Changguanou Area seventy-two, an ambulance depot will be provided. We also uh give support to the three runway system, and that means a new ambulance depot to be set up in Chellap Kwak to meet the needs in the area. Uh follow-up question, Chairman. First, I thank the Secretary for answering this question on national security education. Now, it seems resources are scattered across different policy bureaus. So you need to have a coordinator for all these events and activities. Second, about um psychological services and counseling, as mentioned by the Director, um well, it is important to have a correct mindset. Now, we have counseling services um provided by uh CPs who are Hong Kong residents in the UK. So I think that we should leverage on the manpower resources available. We should recruit them. About national security and counseling, uh we will review the situation and deploy more resources if needed. Uh next is my turn, SB oh-nine-oh. The number of stolen taxis compared to the other of other vehicle theft cases increased substantially, up by two times. I'd like to know the reason and whether there are ways to recover stolen taxis. As I understand, well, oh, this just slipped my mind. Uh wait, um it's so-called shadow taxis. They are used to commit crimes. So um fewer people will fall victim to these cases if you're able to catch them quickly. Next, about SB two-nine-one, in terms of the legal parking tickets, there is now a new um entry called vehicle type. And the information can help you analyze uh the situation of parking spaces. So do you, on a regular basis, refer the data to the transport department, or do you have a platform on which you share data with the transport department? About stolen taxis, shadow taxis, and also fixed penalty tickets, I will invite the Police Commissioner to take your questions. In twenty twenty-two, the number of taxis reported stolen increased quite substantially comparing to the figure in twenty twenty-one. We're not talking about theft from vehicles, but rather um the vehicle or the taxi being stolen. About seven to eighty percent of taxis were recovered in the end. So in many of these cases, we observed that basically these taxis are parked in the streets and the criminals had their eye on the property therein, so they just simply drove the vehicle away, stole the property, and returned the vehicles to their place. Uh the problem is, these taxis are usually illegally parked in the streets. So um as a public education strategy, we remind drivers to be vigilant. But so far, we have not observed uh the stolen taxis being used as the so-called shadow taxis. The other question about fixed penalty tickets and the new entry of category of vehicles, I don't have information at hand. Let me give you a reply after the meeting. Next, second round, Mr. Edmund Wong, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. Question, SB one-five-two AMS. I'm a member of the AMS. I see from the reply that the budget will be increased by three-point-six percent mainly due to a number of reasons, one of which is um ambulance services. I understand that the AMS um now offers um service on a non-emergency basis. Last year, there was a shortage of resources for emergency services. Now, has there been any discussion with the AMS to leverage on their resources um available to address the issue of, say, P-two calls? That is urgent calls for transferring patients from one hospital to another. We can enlist the help of AMS to optimize the use of resources. I just want to know whether uh there is any discussion in this regard so as to optimize the use of resources um more efficiently. Uh let me defer to Mr. Wong, Chief Staff Officer of AMS of Syria Medical Service. Uh Mr. Wong asked this question. Basically, we have explored this option with Mr. Young, the Director. And for non-urgent requests for transfer of patients from one hospital to another, we can offer assistance. And in fact, um the, the, the trend is that the percentage of these cases uh is getting higher comparing to urgent cases. On providing emergency ambulance services, we are also exploring this option. For example, for somebody suffering from a minor injury in the mainland, um after preliminary treatment, if the Hong Kong resident would like to come back to Hong Kong for further treatment, we may be able to uh pick them up uh at the boundary. Not necessary for uh further transport, transportation to public hospitals, but to private hospitals. And for some other, um say, um some of the cases, uh patients may be required to be transferred to a district health center or other healthcare centers. So especially for those with mobility issues, we can help um transport these uh patients to the healthcare centers for health monitoring. And in the long term, we have a more complex issue. We should explore with the FSD. For example, we can have volunteers with medical background to work on the ambulances. Instead of stationing at hospitals, we can just carry out certain medical procedures in the place of residence of patients, say in a residential care home. We can, for example, help with the intubation onsite instead of transporting the patient to the hospital for treatment. We can save the journey to and from the care home. And this is also in line with the development of primary care. So these are options we're exploring with the departments. Mr. Young, any supplement? About um deploying AMS vehicles to help transfer patients during the epidemic, we did exactly the same. The AMS could help us with transferring patients to different facilities, and we are exploring whether we can um enlist a help to transfer more patients. No follow-up. That concludes our session. Thank you, Secretary, uh for coming. Um I thank your team as well. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.